All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, July 16th. Time is now 5:30. For our closed session portion of the meeting, do we have any public comment on closed session? And we do have the online available because of, we do have Councilman Baker that is remotely joining us for the meeting. Okay, so no public comment, nobody is on, so we'll go ahead and close. City Council now recess and go into closed session, discuss our agenda. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Riker City Council meeting for July 16th, 2024. Please join us in the Pledge Allegiance. Okay, we did have closed session this evening, earlier this evening, and we have no reportable actions to report on that meeting. And then just another note here is Councilman Baker is participating remotely pursuant to government code section 54953 for a just cause reason. So public participation will be, shall be allowed remotely via Zoom being she is remotely this evening and not with us in the chambers. Okay, just make sure everybody's phones are silent, on silent, and then also our council members, our mics are on. Okay. Okay, this is item number five, special presentations and or announcements. This time slot is for information presentation appointments or indoor awards to be extended by the city council or to the city council. Mr. Lebeter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there are no special presentations this evening.
All right, thank you. Number six, public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited to all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for a public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for a public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on a future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with council or city staff to have public comment at this time.
Hello, I'm Mike Grifantini. I live at 2903 Watson Court, Montague. For the past eight years, I have given walking and wagon tours in the greater Wairika area. They are done under the name Siskiyou Historic Tours, and they are sponsored by the Siskiyou County Historical Society. I have participated in many city events by wearing my 1880s outfit, giving tours and talking to participants about Wairika's history. I believe her old history is the foundation of Wairika's persona. Look at the Gold Rush mine right behind the city council mayor. You can see that right there. It's one of the main reasons that tourists want to come to our town. At a recent council meeting, I learned that the name of this year's Gold Rush Days was to be changed. However, it's not clear why a name change was warranted. Apparently, our traditional Gold Rush Days needed to be rebranded, but for what reasons? Later on, at a meeting downtown, I heard that the change was needed to be more inclusive. However, I never learned what would be done other than the name change to encourage more inclusion. Regardless of the name change, I agreed to participate in Golden City Days, and I will continue to participate in any event that I am invited to. Following this year's Golden City Days, I was curious about what the public felt about the name change. The only way I knew how to do so was on social media. The approach has flaws, but I lacked other options. I placed a poll on both the Siskiyou County Grapevine and Siskiyou Historic Tours Facebook pages. What it said was, Golden City Days occurred last weekend. In your opinion, what should we call future events? Then I said I would take the results to the city council, which I am doing right now. The poll options were, and I gave two options, Gold Rush Days or Golden City Days. Here are the results of the poll. As of Friday, there were about 1,100 responses. The results were about 1,050 votes for Gold Rush Days and less than 40 for Golden City Days. So that's about 96% for Gold Rush Days, 4% for Golden City Days. I was amazed by the results. Not that most people wanted Gold Rush Days, but 96% of them wanted to. I doubt if I could find any other question I could ask people in our divided society, that would get 96% of the votes. The name change of poll results bring up several thoughts I wish you could consider. The first is the name change was proposed and accepted by the city council with little finny discussion. If public sentiment had been researched, the city would have learned what I did. That almost everyone prefers the name Gold Rush Days. Why wasn't some polling done? Why wasn't some outreach done to find out about changing the name of something that has been going on for many years? Number two, we did not have a chamber of commerce for some strange reason. Other little towns smaller than we do seem to be able to, but we can't. Therefore, we have increasingly depended upon Discover Siskiyou to organize events, and they've been doing a very good job. However, Discover Siskiyou has its own board of directors and its own goals. Consequently, it is unclear if Discover Siskiyou will solicit community input, or is it only responsible to their own board of directors? In other words, not you, but to their board of directors. So the question is, when the city relies on Discover Siskiyou or any other third party, is the city relinquishing its oversight and review responsibilities? I just throw that out to you. To sum up, the change of event name from Gold Rush Days to Golden City Days was a trivial modification. Or was it? Words are important. When we change our commonly used words or the names of events, we are saying that something is wrong, incorrect, or can be improved. Are you, the city council or Discover Siskiyou, sure that something needed to change? And if so, what and why? I understand that this public comment time is not for a dialogue, but I wish for each of you to discuss this issue internally, request public input, and then make the right decision next year. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak before you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Don Marie Autry, Concerned Citizen. I did bullet points because I yap so much as a chihuahua. I know that you get tired of me and want to just kick me, but I want it to matter, so I did bullet points. So first of all, I believe that the city council needs to make an ordinance to put the mayor and the city manager in charge of city emergencies, because getting or you put the mayor on the ballot up for election. However, that means that you have to have a special election. And so you would put it up for, do the citizens want that this time, and then do a special election, which is going to cost even more. Or you could just make the ordinance so that when there's an emergency, it happens, because this time there was an emergency, we needed a cooling shelter for our citizens. I called our Board of Supervisor District Nancy O'Gran, and she tells me, call the mayor of your city and the city manager. But we do not have a strong mayor in this town. He is a mayor in name only, so we need this taken care of immediately for emergencies such as that fire we had, and we are in fire season. I need to know who I contact when there is an emergency. And the cooling shelter, we need a cool, our cooling center, we need one opened when it's 100 degrees or more. I know that when it feels like it's 97 is when we really need it, because that's when one of our citizens did die. In fact, he was kicked out of a motel, went to the greenway and died. But that would be all summer long. So we need one for 100 degrees. We, I did manage to get one open, and thank you, Corey. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Jason. And I worked it Saturday and Sunday. I did have six people here on Saturday, seven people here on Sunday. Two of those are our residents. They rent here. They do not have an air conditioner. They also vote, and they were very displeased. And meanwhile, also, I mean, I, we need help with opening the base camp. If we have to waive permits, we made permits for everything, and they are almost out of funds. So I understand that they have money. I understand they had a grant, but they're almost out of that. So if we have to do something to get that open, we need it open ASAP. Because that will serve as a cooling shelter, that will also serve as a warming shelter in the winter. And my complete thank you to the person who bring Gold Rush Days back to the city council. It's been Gold Rush Days since 2004, and it needs to be that again. Thank you. Sam.
Thank you, Don Marie.
Thank you.
Lorenzo Love. Public safety. We need full-time professional paramedics and EMTs. Not only to reduce the workload on the fire department, but to improve the general public safety. I'm asking you to not spend $42,000 of the public's money to figure out how much of a pay raise to give existing employees, but rather to institute a pay and hiring freeze until a team of full-time professional paramedics and EMTs are hired. The city has a $26 million cash balance. It shouldn't be that hard to figure out. Public safety should be your number one priority. Is it?
Right, thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Gary Nelson, Franco-American Hotel, 310 West Minor Street. And I'm here to talk about the Gold Rush Days. Last time, I'm sorry, I didn't make copies for everybody. The last time I was on the board of directors for the chamber, or for the council, I mean, for the chamber, this was the ad we put out, and in this ad, which Dwayne, you had an ad in here, by the way, it claimed that 2018 was our 12th annual Gold Rush Days. This year would have been our 18th annual Gold Rush Days, but it's not anymore. One of the major marketing mistakes made in the nation back in 1985 was Coca-Cola felt that they were so big and so strong that they could change the formula of Coca-Cola in 1985. They lost $30 million in six months because of that change that they thought they could make. Now, if the largest, one of the largest companies in the nation can't make changes like that, why in the world do you guys think you can make changes like that without affecting everything? Now, in 2018, we keep count of the customers in our building every time. On Gold Rush Days in 2017, we had 778 people come in our building alone. This year, two days, we had 208. Now, if you don't think that's a difference, something's wrong. Now, last year, it was only one day, and we had 400 in one day last year when they changed the date, which I complained about, because you don't change things when you've got something established. Rule in marketing is, it takes seven times to tell a person what you want before they hear it once. When you change the name, it's going to take seven years to make that happen. And that's rule number one in marketing. That's forever. That's not today. That's forever been. And the problem is, we're messing around with Gold Rush Days. This is the second year in a row we've messed with it, and it certainly affects the businesses. I thought Gold Rush Days was to help the businesses in our community. Two of our businesses were told they couldn't even set up a booth outside their store because they were in competition to vendors that were coming to the event, and those vendors were more important than our stores on Minor Street. Those vendors came from Etna. I didn't know we were trying to make Etna better when we had Gold Rush Days. I thought Gold Rush Day was to make Wairika better, and I would like to see that happen again.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening. I'm Heather Chippiloney. I'm Program Director for Discover Siskiyou. First of all, I really just wanted to say thank you to the city staff and city council for allowing us to host both Golden City Days and the summer concerts this year. I'm going to keep this brief because my colleague Sarah will come later and present our formal event report. But I did just want to let you know that we, again, as we did last year, tracked the event with our data analytics software called Placer, tracks people via their cell phones, and we did see an increase in about 1,000 visits this year, which was awesome, and 53% of the visitors over those two days were from out of town, which was also an increase. So that's always great for us to see as we exist to bring tourists into our community. I did also want to let you know that we received positive feedback from tribal members as well as community members, both in person and on social media for including the tribe in this year's entertainment. There was on Sunday a drumming group that performed and talked about their culture, and it was really, really cool to see. We feel really proud of that, and we hope that you do as well. That said, you know, we want to support what the community wants as far as events go. We also do need to ensure that the events that we support align with the goals of our organization as well. And, you know, we know we're not the only event planning game in town, so if it is the council's wishes to, you know, proceed in a different direction, we're more than happy to step aside or, you know, work with you all on amending our contract if necessary. So just know that we're definitely open to compromise, and we want the community to have events that they feel proud of and support. Finally, I did just want to say publicly, thank you so much to the Public Works Department. They were so helpful at the summer concert on Friday. It was so hot. It wound up cooling off and the smoke cleared out, but they actually stayed late and helped us roll up banners off the stage, and they were just so lovely to work with. And so just wanted to say thanks and hope you guys might pass that along to them. So thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, no other public comment. We'll move on to, sorry, I lost my space here. Consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial, and will be enacted by one motion unless the, any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from June 9th, 2024 through June 22nd, 2024. B, approval ratification of payments issued from June 23rd, 2024 through July 6th, 2024. C, adoption of Resolution 24-33 of the City Council of the City of Riker approving the destruction of certain city records identified by the Finance Director. D, adoption of Resolution 2024-34 of the Riker City Council of the City of Wairika, setting forth the appropriation limits for the City of Wairika for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held June 18th, 2024. F, approval of minutes of a special meeting held July 11th, 2024. G, adoption of Resolution 24-35 of the Riker City Council of the City of Wairika approving the agreement for services between the City of Wairika and Q, consulting group to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreements for the compensation study. H, approval of the transportation claim for the local transportation fund fiscal year 2024, 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city. Recommend city council action before you use the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Riker as presented. What are the wishes of the council? Council, okay?
This is Councilman McCoy. I'll make the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council, the city where we get asked presented here.
I have a motion from Councilman McCoy. I'll second the motion. I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Hi.
And I'm Mayor Middleton. The motion passes five to zero. Okay, eight, is old business. This is the Municipal Projects Manager. This is the agenda title. This is the second reading of the ordinance to provide informal bidding procedures pursuant to CUPCA, CUPCCA, and finding such action exempt from SEQA. On June 18th, 2024, the staff recommended adoption of the Uniform Public Construction Act, Accounting Act, CUPCCA. The City of Council adopted the resolution electing to adopt approve, approve the first reading of the ordinance according to Section 3.60 Public Works Contracts of the Riker Municipal Code to provide informal bidding procedures under the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Cindy, how are you?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Cindy Lynch, Municipal Projects Manager. As Mayor Middleton indicated, we're here tonight to request and approve a second reading and adopt ordinance number 877, adding Chapter 3.60 to the Wairika Municipal Code addressing the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, affectionately known as CUPCA. The purpose of the act is to allow public projects of $60,000 and under to be done by city staff, possibly by their own resources or by negotiated contract or by a purchase order, and also to allow public projects in the amount of under $200,000 to use an informal bidding process, which is covered by this ordinance to be adopted. As you know, the Finance Committee met in April to go over the CUPCA policies and procedures manual. And in addition, there's no need for an environmental analysis, because this is not a project under SEQA guidelines. So that's all I have. If you have questions, I am here. Otherwise, I leave it to your discretion.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Comment? Okay, and then, okay, public comment? Okay. Because public comment and come back to council. Council McCoy have a comment?
Yeah, I do want to reiterate that the Finance Committee has met. We've discussed this. This, basically, we support this because it, long-term, will save money for the city in allowing us to do some of our own jobs that are under 60, 60 grand or under, and also using a more informal contract process with 200 grand or under. I can say that there are times when we have bid things out, and by the time you get to a formal bid, the cost has gone up significantly, and that's due to the fact that we, of the, you know, from public construction, you know, costs. So I am here to support CUPCA as is the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCoy. All right. Recommend city council action before you use to approve the second reading and adopt an ordinance Chapter 3.60 to the Riker Municipal Code addressing uniform construction costs, accounting procedures, and finding such action exempt from the California Event Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. What are the wishes of the council?
Still moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Keg.
I second the motion.
Okay. In a second, for Council McCoy, I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg. Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Council McCoy.
Hi.
And Mayor Middleton, aye, motion passes five to zero. All right. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, no public hearing. New business is the Planning Manager. This is agenda title, request for donation for the Kiwanis, Kiwanis Easter Egg Hunt. Mr. Lebeters.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. So Alia Roka-Lesra, your planning manager, is at an Esri conference down in Pasadena, so she will be back next week, and so this has fallen to me. So ultimately, we're here this evening to talk about the Kiwanis Club and the Easter Egg Hunt that they've been doing at Minor Street Park for many decades now. Basically, Stephen is Stephen right here behind me is available to come up after I just introduced this item and talk about it. But normally, in the past, the city's given $500. The caveat here, just with inflation, is that they're asking for a $250 increase up to $750. 10,000 eggs are generally hidden in the grass there at Minor Street Park. It takes only seconds, I believe, for the 250-plus kids in our community. Some of them that are traditionally going, I know that I have pictures of my wife from 40 years ago at Minor Street Park with her friends in my house, and I know that we also have a number of kids in our community, and there is a huge community benefit here, because there are a number of kids that don't have the privilege that some of us do have, and this is their only opportunity to experience an Easter Egg Hunt like this. And so there is a huge community benefit to the youth here in our community, and you'll know from the general plan that the census tract showed that we actually decreased in age here in the city of Wairika, and we are, I believe, the youngest city in Siskiyou County because of the influx of young families. And so there are a number of kids in the community that benefit from this event. And without further ado, I will kick it over to Stephen to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you very much for considering this. Nobody in the club remembers not having the Easter Egg Hunt. So our best guess, this goes back to the mid 1950s when the club was formed. So our best guess, this goes back to the mid 1950s when the club was formed. And 10,000 Easter eggs is a lot. Uh, we thank the key club, the Kiwanis High School Group for stuffing eggs in the Siskiyou Opportunity Center. Um, clients and they really seem to enjoy doing this. Um, as gentleman mentioned, it is inflation. Um, everything's coming from China. And we're trying to keep the quality up. You know, we'd like the little chocolate candies versus just gum, gumbats or what? I don't know what the kids call them, but they prefer chocolate. But uh, if you could consider um, a slight increase, we would greatly appreciate it. And and this year I am seven months ahead of the curve instead of five days ahead of the curve last year. And I thank you and the city staff for pushing that through quickly.
We are highly appreciative of you being here uh, seven months ahead of schedule. Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, it's a I dropped the ball last year. I delegated in Bennett Dipstick along the way as my managerial classes forty years ago called it. I will not make that mistake again. Have any of you recently been to the the Easter egg hunt? It takes us well over two hours with two dozen volunteers and locusts come as soon as a, a police siren goes off and you stay out of their way. Yeah, so um, thank you very much. Any questions for me or the club?
Uh, any questions for the council or comments? Mr. Davis.
Sometimes when you're a cluster. I've on it. Got it. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. I, I'd like to say that the, I've been in, I was in business from 1984. And the Kiwanis had that Easter egg hunt. I cannot remember them not having it. It is a wonderful event. And the thing that always amazed me because I had my kids went up there. They were little when we first got here. And those eggs were gone in a heartbeat. I mean, it was and they just, it's everywhere and not an egg in sight afterward. It was, it was really a good thing. Uh, and, and I really admire you for doing that, the Kiwanis for doing that.
And one of the things we request the Public Works Department is not to mow the lawn that week. So we have a attempt to hide the eggs. But um, we have a past member who's 102 and can't remember her name. She lives across the street from the park and she sits out on the
Adna Skinner.
Yes. And I signed her birthday card. Uh, I am, am a newbie. We moved up, retired up here in 2017 and I'm still learning a whole bunch about this wonderful city. But she does not remember not having. And I have to say that carefully because I'm not sure Kiwanis was the last group to allow women to join. And something we hide our head because Rotary beat us to it. But thank you very much. And I invite all of you to come and just see all the little kids and a lot of them walk to the event. And I just saw a picture Rosalie in an Easter bunny outfit. Couple of years ago, we had three Easter bunnies show up and they just showed up. Okay.
We don't do any age looking, so you could probably give answer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have another question from Councilman McCoy.
I wanted, I wanted to thank you for two things. One of them is my daughter's in her mid 30s, but I can remember bringing her down there for the Easter egg hunt. And we always had fun. It was always quick. I mean, it's over in like 10 or minutes or 12 minutes or couple of kids are looking around. But I also want to thank you. I personally want to thank you as a council member for bringing it to us seven months early. So often, my six years on council, things are brought to us the week or two or three or four before. So I thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for your thoughtfulness.
Well, I have a small consulting firm. Water rights and things need to be finalized, double-checked a month before it goes to the court because you know, as soon as you finish, you put it to bed, you read something. What did I put that in? Where did that number come from or spell checked and I catch that? But yeah. You're very welcome.
All right. Thank you so much. Any public comment? All right. So this uh, recommends uh, city council, possible, can't even talk, possible city council actions, a motion to direct the city manager to authorize a $750 donation to the Kiwanis Easter egg hunt.
This is Council McCoy so moved.
I have a motion from Councilman McCoy.
I'll second that.
And a second, Councilman Davis. I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Hi.
And I am Mayor Middleton. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're at the city manager and staff report. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Waerica City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. Just have a brief report. Uh, on 7/10, I toured the Dunsmere Resource Center. Uh, the Siskiyou Consortium of Resource Centers uh, has a new director, Steve Bryan. And so he is the normal director down in Dunsmere and now he's overseeing multiple different locations. So we started the conversation of apostle, possible partnership to support more services to the public here in Waerica uh, with the resource center. They're currently working on a kid-centric event that's going to happen here in the summer in Minor Street Park. But we're also looking at different possibilities to go after grants to support uh, different interests here in the community with our resource center. Uh, that same evening, I attended the League of Local Agencies Lola meeting in Dunsmere. Uh, we are working with Danco on a possible Home Key project and we hope to have that project in front of the city council here in the coming month for uh, with the grant application. If you'll remember, we signed MOUs with Danco and also with RCHDC. Danco is working on some uh, workforce housing over off of Deer Creek. And RCHDC just finished the crossroads. And so either of them were available to work on a Home Key project and Danco was the one that um, advocated to help us out with that. So they're currently working with a number of motel owners. And we're hopeful that we will be able to bring that application to you. There was talk about the governor removing that. We're on our understanding from the budget, our understanding at the moment is that there's been 160 to 180 million dollars earmarked for this round of funding for Home Key. Uh, Caltrans completed obviously uh, the Oberlin intersection with the concrete project a few, a few weeks ago. And they're currently obviously working on the Moonlit Oaks intersection with the concrete project, uh, which should be completed later this week. If you've seen anything between Finn Walls and 4H on Southern Oregon Street, you'll have noticed the rehab that's happening there. It looks really great from 4H down to I think about Greenhorn and then it's closed again, but they're about halfway through that project. That same company uh, is going to be doing the asphalting of uh, what has been just kind of a snaked wastewater collection project that has snaked through the entire community and right now is sitting on Yama Street. That project actually has another location that it will complete on, and that's going to be the alleyway uh, behind this gentleman's uh, building and behind uh, Mr. Ken Barnes's building. So that alleyway behind Minor Street is going to be the final phase of this project. And so we started on Burgess. We were up Nap Street. We were over off of the Oak. Uh, Oak Street, we're down third, we're on Yama at the moment. And so all of that pavement has to get fixed. And so the folks doing South Oregon Street will be completing and then they'll be transitioning to work on the pavement over in the Burgess Street uh, neighborhood first. Um, and obviously the wastewater collection project that I just mentioned has really been snaking through the city. Just as, as soon as you think you're done with construction, you go to the other side of the town in the reses and there it is. Uh, more construction, but uh, we're very happy to have uh, improved sewer laterals and, and uh, sewer pipe over on that part of the, in that part of the community. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Okay, before I go to council members, um, one thing I like to discuss with our council members are also um, people joining us tonight is um, there's been some developments over the last couple of weeks um, with the Supreme Court and uh, decision that came down from the Grants Pass case. But the city is in the framework and dealing and camping in public places. So um, it's changed the broader picture of what cities can do and not do or um, and our hands have been tied for a little while. So I would like to have a discussion and about that and um, talk about the framework, dealing with camping in public places. I'd also like uh, our city attorney to review our current ordinances to make sure that they are in compliance with the state and our federal law. And I'd like the city attorney to explore the options uh, for penalty provisions that are now available under such ordinances that are um, available to us to pursue. And if it's okay, as council members, I, Keg and McCoy uh, have experience in dealing with these issues and have been dealing with the homeless for uh, before I've taken my seat here. And the other council members and have worked hard with that. I would like them to discuss those issues with Mr. Jared and bringing the uh, these items back and moving forward. Also like Mr. Jared to bring back uh, options for amending the city code if it is available uh, to us as soon as possible. So I wanted to bring that to um, everybody's attention. As we know, we have heard that come down from the Supreme Court. We've all received emails and I'm sure we've all been hit up by our citizens of what um, lies ahead for changing with our unhoused populations and our unhoused uh, population and um, moving forward as a city. So if that's okay, uh, with the, with the city council. If we can move forward to doing that.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Mr. Jared, does that sound all right with you? Okay. Mr. Ledbetter, you'll be working with um, Mr. Jared, I take it. And then also the other council members moving forward of what will come before us next.
Yes, yes, I will. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Um, and I guess I'll just go ahead and finish up with my report and then I'll pass it off. I never go first. So um, I'll just make a quick since I've taken the mic. I attended uh, the Lola meeting uh, last Wednesday. Um, it was great. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Baker, I'm sorry. I totally spaced it. Ms. Baker, are you there? Councilman Baker?
I am.
I'm sorry, I spaced it. Did you hear what I said? And then uh, the direction for Mr. Jared? Was that okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, sorry. I spaced out on you. I'm sorry. Okay. Um, thank you. Council David. Okay. Oh, the Lola dinner was in um, Dunsmere hosted at the Wheelhouse. It was, I've never been there. It was great food. It was um, fun, great speaker. Couple of great speakers, but the one that um, stood out to us the most, um, and Mr. Ledbetter, correct me. I forgot what his position was, but can you remind me? But he talked about fire mediation in town and muddies and guiding that town into making improvements of getting um, residents homeowners insurance lowered and doing the work that's needed to get people insurance back and even lowering insurance. So um, what was his position there, Mr. Ledbetter?
Uh, Stephen Decatur. He is the OES Resiliency Officer for um, the city of Dunsmere. And he came about the same way that Sarah Chaffee came to us, which is a grant-funded position by the State Office of Emergency Services. And so Dunsmere has this free help essentially same as we do with Sarah Chaffee.
Yeah, so he spoke and so that it's great that we have that here and be uh, moving forward with um, that program. But it was uh, great what he's doing down there and I look forward to um, for our city and our citizens as well. So we're very lucky to have that. Um, I spoke, was invited um, along with other dignitaries and also supervisor Ogren who's here in the audience. We um, and Mr. Ledbetter attended as well. Um, went to the uh, ribbon cutting and grand opening um, of the crossroads on Foothill Drive and um, it was well, well-attended. Um, I had a tour before. I didn't do a tour this time, but it turned out very nice. Um, so we're very excited that uh, facility is done. It's been long waited and uh, everyone was very excited to see that day come up there. So it was a great event. Nice that everybody came together. Uh, the city of Waerica and our partnership with the uh, county of Siskiyou um, the board of supervisors is getting that project um, going and seeing it done and hopefully seeing the residents move in soon and uh, much needed. And I hope it's not the last one. I hope where there's more to come because um, the housing is definitely needed along with other housing as well, but definitely affordable housing. So um, just want to say our, my thoughts are with our um, neighboring cities in the valley at Fort Jones and other cities in the county that are facing these horrible fires right now. So um, as the mayor on behalf of the council, I'm sure their thoughts are with them as well. Your thoughts and if you're, need anything, please reach out to us, our city manager, and we're hoping for uh, that fire to be out soon. Um, with that, I will go to, who wants to go? Anyone want to volunteer? Council Davis, I'll go to you. Yep.
I have a comment on an item we discussed earlier, and that was Gold Rush Days. And I I'm sorry, it's cover Siskiyou if not here and uh, Griffin TV is not here. The uh, Gold Rush Days were called the sidewalk sales when I was here earlier and it was specifically designed for the merchants on Minor and Broadway Street. And we had quite a few merchants and they were um, allowed to display their wares on Friday and Saturday out in the street. And of course you made a few uh, discounted prices. And the last year that they had the sidewalk sales, I um, netted $10,000 in those two days. And that's quite a bit for around the nineties, right around the nineties. And then the chamber decided that we needed to be more inclusive. And they changed the name to the Gold Rush Days. Um, and during that time, that's when they started bringing in street vendors and uh, shows uh, gunfights and stuff like that. Um, and, and it was still very successful like they talked about. It was, it was very successful. And the change is natural and normal. Uh, Golden City Days will be to some people like the loss of sidewalk sales was to me. When they went to Gold Rush Days. So they lost Gold Rush Days and it was a 96% vote. Of course, I didn't see the Facebook page to vote one way or the other. But it changes normal and natural and sometimes it's for the betterment of the community. And, and I'm not saying that this is, but I am, I am staying with something we wanted to try for a while. All right. Now to my, to my bailiwick.
All right.
Which is the Fire Safe Council. We met and um, was kind of interesting. was kind of interesting. It was right before the Shelley fire. And so we were talking about what we're doing and they had a few fires going. And it wasn't all inclusive. Cal Fire was on Zoom and, and I guess I was on Zoom too. So I guess we were all on Zoom. And they had a bunch of stuff that they were doing and talking about getting into the Outson project. And then the Shelley fire blew up and so none of that stuff has been gone. So not much went on there. Greenhorn Park, I walk in all the time. And I've walked in it a lot because I have a new dog. And it's a good place we can go and she likes to get her feet wet in the pond and, and but I've been looking about being on the Fire Safe Council, it makes me more aware of things that are out there. In Greenhorn Park, you know, there's the high grass around Mr. Leadbetter's disc golf course that uses. And there are several dead trees on the, I guess it's on the North Slope, pines and firs. But in the past, someone has came in or an organization, and I believe it was the Conservation Camp over in Scott Valley that came over with tile fire. And they fell a bunch of trees and bucked them up into wood. Firewood size stacked the branches and that part of the park that they worked in is really nice. I mean, you can see six feet, eight feet up. And it's a good clear shot and for people that are walking that are by themselves, it's safer looking. You know, the feel-good thing. So I, I, I hope that we continue with that type of, of fire hardening of our park because it would be a horrible thing for it to happen. And there are a lot of dead trees in that park right now. Dwayne looks at it every morning, I think. Yeah. I believe that's what I have for tonight. I have some thoughts about when we start digging into this regulation that Andrew is going to. Or I have some thoughts about that at a later date. So we will, I will save this for then.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. I have no official report because, well, I've kind of been sidelined since July 1st. I would like to just say that I appreciate the availability of the Fire Department to respond to emergencies in people's homes. And I give them an A for their response. And for those of you who don't know, I took quite a tumble in my backyard and broke my ankle. And I'm a little bit tired of being at home, but I've got several more weeks to recuperate. But I hope to be back at the August meetings in person. And I just want to say that, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to attend these meetings remotely. Thank you.
All right. Well, we look forward to you being back and get well soon. All right, Councilman McCoy.
So the first thing I want to share is basically from me, but I want to share that my prayers and my thoughts are with all of Siskiyou County as we're enduring these fires now. And we've got them over in Scott Valley. We've got them in Shasta Valley. We've got, you know, they're small ones, but any fire is is, is not welcome. So I want to pray for the firefighters, but I want to pray for the families and the animals that they're trying to get out of there. And everything that's going on and all the people that are taking care of animals here in Wairika. I am happy to report informally that the sidewalks on the north end of town are almost done. They're getting very, very close. They think they'll be done by the end of July. When I've talked to a fellow that is out there, he is kind of an engineer handling for Caltrans, but he, he, he's paid by, I think by the contractors to be a liaison. I'm getting many, I don't know about you, but I'm getting many compliments on the Main Street lights. And I told them I would have loved to have put in more, but at $2 million to finish the, I think that's what the figure was at the time, wasn't it? Two million to finish the rest of the street? They wanted us to pony up two million. These were 1.2 and something like that. And we just didn't have the money, but they said, oh, we love the lights. Again, my sources tell me that construction on highway, on the highway, Main Street should be done no later than in September to the end of October. That's what they're shooting for. So that's pretty nice. Lola League of Local Agencies was wonderful. I enjoyed it. We heard some great speakers. There's a lot going on. Kudos to Montague for putting on a great show. I am sorry that they had to fight a fire out there because of it, but or, or in spite of it, I guess, I don't know which, but kudos to them for putting that on. Let's see here, where do I want to go? CNC candies on Minor Street under new ownership. They're open seven days a week. They have fro yo, soft serve ice cream, and they still have a full bill of fare on sandwiches. Get, they're getting a lot of good mouth-to-mouth and a lot of good Facebook airtime so that if you haven't had, if you haven't had a chance to stop in, please stop in. Dawn Marie, I want to thank you for volunteering in the cooling center. I want to call you. I appreciate that. So, you know, and I know that the, the ones that came in did, did appreciate it. And Lorenzo, thank you for, you were driving there for a day or two or maybe more. And I appreciate you bringing the people by. I do want to say something that might be a little bit uncomfortable, but I, I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting at the very last one. And we, there's a grant that the county has for showers and for wash, washer and dryers for the homeless. And it's money that's already here. It's there. And because of the fact that it's taking longer to get some of the places open, like Base Camp, the Behavioral Health spoke on behalf and pleaded with the Board of Supervisors to go ahead and extend so they could use that money until January 1st, just so we're, we know that we're going to be open somewhere. It was to my great disappointment that the Honorable Ray Hopt and the Honorable Mike Cobbseff voted against it. So it went down to defeat at two to two. The reasoning being that more people are going to become homeless because they want to get a free shower. So I know there's a lot of people out there telling me, oh, I want to be homeless so I can get free shower and laundry. I'm going to become homeless. I'm going to encourage my fellow city council members to write letters, to talk to each of the Board of Supervisors, to ask them to bring that back for a vote because one supervisor was out of the country at the time. And so I think that supervisor, I would like to see all five supervisors there when they, when they have the vote. Because I, I think it's more important to have all five than the four. So I urge each of you, my fellow council members, to call, to write or both and let these, let, let them know. I know we get calls and we've, you know, and we sometimes meet supervisors for coffee or lunch or whatever. And I think it's time for, when they need something, and I think it's time for us to let, remind them that, that they serve our citizens here in Wairika. And we are the county seat and we do suffer the most of any cost in, in, in homeless. Whether it's emotional or whether it's financial. And then my, so I'm going to ask you to do that. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call me. And then I'm going to also ask you. We, we have it come up every year for cooling centers and for heating centers. And every year, Siskiyou, Wairika ends up having to host these. We have to put them together. We have to host them. This last one, we got help from a little, we got help from the county for behavioral health. And but if you look on the webpages for the county, the Director of Public Health and the Director of the OES, what it says is that they're responsible for cooling and warming shelters. Now, county didn't have a cooling shelter over here on July 4th. I had people calling me and saying, oh yeah, there's one going in over there. And I was sitting here and I said, no, there isn't one over there. So it really is their responsibility and it is incumbent upon, again, upon the five of us to begin to put pressure on OES Director and the Director of Public Health to see that we, that they start to do their job, that they fulfill every bit of their job. Because they're the ones that are getting, if there's any money coming in, it's not coming to the city. And I know I read on Facebook, oh, the city gets money all the time. Yeah, great. Well, you know, if, if we get it, please let me know where it's coming from so I can call the state of California. But I'm going to encourage you again to call the Director of Public Health and write them, the OES Director and write them. If you need to talk about it more, I'd be glad to talk with you about it and let them know that we expect them as a council to serve the needs of our citizens. I mean, these are our citizens. We have people coming down to, to cool off that are not homeless. And that happens in every big city. It happens in a lot of small cities. So I'm going to leave it at that and I'm going to thank you all for a wonderful evening.
All right. Thank you. And I did send a letter, Councilman McCoy, to Dr. Clark and the county supervisors for my support of the showers. So they did, hopefully they received my letter. I'm hoping that they got it. So it was sent to her and I'm pretty sure she shared it. I'm hoping she shared it, but I just want to let you know that I did send a letter of my support for that program. Right, Councilman Cake?
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on a couple of things on, I think, thanks for bringing a couple of things up. As far as the showers and portable showers and the laundry service. I know firsthand from some of these homeless individuals that they rely on that for their, for their way to get to work and a clean way to get to work. So it is very important for some of these individuals to be able to have a shower and get to work. And, and I know quite a few individuals that are up on the, what we call the hill, that are actually working class people that unfortunately have made maybe bad choices or made just some things in their life has went wrong. And this is their opportunity to get cleaned up so they can make it to work. So it, it is a necessity. I think once we get the, once the, we see the project base camp opened up. I know Tara, that's going to be running it. She has definitely expressed that she's going to let a lot of these individuals be able to use that shower. So we're hoping and praying that gets opened up as soon as possible. So those individuals can utilize that. So that is definitely a necessity for some of those individuals. Another thing I want to piggyback is what Mr. Davis said too about the park and the dead trees and, and whatnot too. Yeah, there is a lot of dead trees up there. I go run it three, four times a week up on the Humbug Trail and go up there. And there's a lot up in there and they, you know, we, we were getting that cleaned up and it's been a slow process. I'm not sure what the next step is, but I know that that'd be something that possibly you could really put up a pressure on the Fire Safe Council to come up with some ideas. That would be great because I think we could get a lot of volunteers too from the community to help out with something of that sort too. Cause there is a lot of dead trees that need to be removed from up there because it's getting to be a huge fire danger. Every time I see lightning, every time I hear about the fires, I just think about losing one of our, probably our biggest assets of Wairika right now is that Greenhorn Park. Living down below it, like most people know I do, that you see hundreds of people utilize that park on a daily basis. And on the weekends, it's even more. It's amazing. People come from different parts of the area. When they come for their Scott Valley and they're working in Wairika, they'll take their lunch break and they'll go for a walk up in Greenhorn Park. People that are traveling through Cal Fire with all these fires going on, Cal Fire, I've seen them up there numerous times walking the park and stuff, just getting their exercise and stuff. So that park is, is probably one of the number one assets for Wairika. And we need to, we need to keep it safe and keep it green and keep it looking good. So yes, I, I think we need to look into some type of grants or whenever we can get. I know like City of Ashland got some special grants up there. And I'm sure there's some available that we just need to explore. And actually the young gal that lives with us did one of those grants, worked up in Oregon and actually did some fire retention projects up there, up in Ashland and that. So I know there's stuff available. It's just trying to seek and get them and get them going. Another thing, we have on August 15th at six o'clock, they're at the Greenhorn Grange. They're going to have another meeting. They're looking for volunteers for the Greenhorn Grange. They're trying to get that up and going again. So if anybody is interested in being part of the Grange, whether it be a member or even a possibly a board member down the road or however that works, attend that meeting because they still need to get their 13 board members to get that Grange going, which if people know that that's lived here a long time, the Grange has been one of the, probably one of the huge, biggest assets for Wairika for putting on events that are affordable. We did the celebration of life for my dad there after he passed away. So it's, it's been a huge thing for the Wairika. So I'd like to see it going again. It'd be great to see people involved in it. People that are part of, was part of the chamber at one point in time. Maybe it's, might be a good idea for them to get involved in the Grange too. So, but anyways, yes, if anybody wants to get involved in it, I encourage them to, because it's, I think it could be another avenue for people to put on events in Wairika that'll, at a reasonable cost and stuff. Another thing I'd like to ask Mr. Leadbetter, the old schoolhouse that I know we, we've kind of inherited that back, correct? Is this something that in the future, I know we've talked about bringing it to where we could use, utilize that? Is this something that possibly we could utilize that as a cooling center and a warming center? That in the future, I know we're talking about putting, you know, ramps and stuff like that in the back of it. So is that something that, a feasible thing?
The, I'm going to talk in two different compartments here. And so the first compartment is that yes, we were gifted or left, depending on how you look at it, the facility. And so we have connected it to power, turn the water back on. Public Works is in there. It's in great shape actually. And so we want to utilize that location as another rentable space within the parks. Inventory, because we do get people in the wintertime that want to have a birthday party or anything similar to what you're talking about, the Grange. As far as the cooling and warming center conversation, that is something that's always kind of just organically elbow greased kind of has happened, but I would advocate that if that's a conversation you want to have, that that needs to be agendized and that the city council would have to really dictate the terminology over taking on that responsibility moving forward. We'd never really got to that finish line. I think we transferred, you and I transferred that conversation to the continuum of care. And then we kind of ended up kind of, you know, sewing something together to make it work until the shelter could open, but it's certainly, the shelter, for whatever reason, is taking substantially longer than we both anticipated. So I'll just leave it at that.
It's okay. Thank, thank you. And I think it's definitely that, and the old schoolhouse that I'm talking about is up at the top of Ranch Lane. For those who, I'm kind of doing my little ADD skipping stones tip here thing, but that's where the location is, is up at the top of Ranch Lane there. It, it used to be used quite a bit for events and stuff too. So that's definitely some possibilities for us as a city to, however, utilize it, like I said, maybe for events or maybe it's one of those quick things we had for emergencies could be used for something of that sort, cooling center or a warming center too. So just kind of throwing that out to the rest of the council. What's that? Yeah, that's, it's now ours.
They get practice.
Yeah. So anyways, last thing, and so like everybody can get home, is we have a COC, Continuum of Care, Siskiyou Advisory, Homeless Advisory Board meeting tomorrow at 1:30 at Behavioral Health at the Red Oak Room. So anybody is welcome to come. A lot of these, there'll be some updates and whatnot that'll might be very good information, but other than that, I don't know. Other than I guess we could suggest with the rest of council's permission and a future date to have that discussion on the Gold Rush Days versus Golden City Days, because I think it's one of those things that the public needs to be, have some involvement in it in future too. So not in the near not in the near future, I mean, as far as the next meeting, but I think it's something that as long as the rest of council is okay with it, I would like to see that brought up long before the next event of Gold Rush Days or Golden City Days. So that's okay with the rest of the council. We can bring that back as discussion as the name of the event be called.
With all due respect.
Yes, sir.
My concern right now is how many projects we have, the the larger picture? Cops, fire, fire hall, roads. The highway that we're trying to deal with it out here, water, sewer and that sort of thing, and not that this isn't. Isn't, what's that?
The shelters.
Yeah, not that this isn't something that
Oh, yeah.
Talk about, but for me right now, it's in the scope of things. It's pretty minor.
Oh, yeah.
Because if we don't have we may get people talking to us about it now, but if we don't have water to flush our toilets, you're really going to see people talking to us. So I mean, I I don't know. I mean, I
So that's fine.
Yeah, so.
We'll just leave it at that. Like I said, it would be something
Well, I don't know.
For the rest of the council to just have a discussion on, and that may be when we bring, when it's brought back as of the event. I'm not saying this this next agenda that we're going to be faced with, I'm saying whenever it gets brought back as as an event planned, you know, so six months from now when it's brought, whatever that may be. I think it just definitely needs, because at that point in time, I probably won't be on council. So I'm getting done, but I would like to see it. I will definitely attend that meeting. Because I think it's something that the public and everybody needs to be have discussion on, on the, what it's called. So
and we're not going to please everybody.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
No matter what we do, people are not going to be pleased.
We we know that on a lot of different levels.
We could change it to Disneyland, Disneyland, Wairika.
But I think I think we owe it to the citizens. So so thank you. That's that's all I wanted to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Kate. All right, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting and I wish everybody a good evening. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.